Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order and open it with prayers and sentiments for the safety of those from Gilroy who are on a pilgrimage in Israel with St. Mary's Church, half of whom, a total of 50 people, half of whom have already returned, about half, and the other 19, 20 or so that have been, that have found some respite in Jordan, are scheduled to depart the Amman Airport tomorrow. So hoping that that, that that really happens for them. Okay, and of course, for all who have suffered in this devastation. All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Tovar.
[inaudible] [inaudible]
All right, please remain standing for the invocation by Rabbi Faith Joy Dantowitz.
Good evening. I stand before you this evening, a rabbi in the Gilroy-Morgan Hill South County community, a wife, a mother, a daughter, a sister, a friend, a human being. A strong community is made up of individuals who support one another in times of joy and sorrow through mundane and magical times. I condemn the Hamas terrorist attack on October 7th, a day when the most Jews since the Holocaust were savagely murdered, over 1,300, with babies' heads cut off, people burned alive, and many people taken hostage, from the youngest to the oldest. Proportionate scale, if this were to happen here in America with 2,500 terrorists, would be well over 40,000 killed, well over 5,000 hostages. It is a frightening time, and I stand here today recognizing the suffering caused by Hamas's disregard for Palestinians' lives and for the horrific choices Israel's faced with in protecting its people while Hamas terrorists use human shields resulting in enormous loss of life. And so I offer this prayer by Malila Helner Esched, who wrote it and sent it out to us this past Friday before Shabbat from her home in Jerusalem. God, of the Spirit of all flesh, here we are before you, broken spirits torn by grief. Have mercy on us, mortals created in your image. Watch over us in a time of destruction and tragedy, terror, death, and panic. Please, please, may our compassion be revealed. May the love within us overwhelm the harsh judgment, vengeance, and evil within us. Behold fierce burning pain cries out, seeking revenge, not comfort. Watch over us, Shekhina, our strength, over our scorched spirits, our terrified souls, over our completely infuriated flesh. May the divine image rise, shining like the dawn from our crushed hearts. May we have faith that we will merit to witness the goodness of the Holy One, the goodness of humankind in the land of the living, and together we say, amen.
All right, thank you. Okay, City Clerk's report on posting the agenda and roll call?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agenda was posted on Friday, October, on Thursday, October 12 at 10:31 AM. Councilmember Armandares?
Here.
Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Klein is absent. Councilmember Hilton is also absent. Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley?
Here.
Okay, before I move on, I'd like to wish a very happy birthday to our October council members, Councilmember Tovar and Councilmember Marks. Happy birthday to you this month. Okay, under orders of the day, we have none, under employee introductions. LeAnn, we have someone to introduce.
Good evening, Council and members of the Gilroy community. I'd like to introduce the newest member of the Human Resources and Risk Management Team, Angelica Harris. Angelica started work last week on October 10th. Angelica has many years of human resources experience that she is bringing to the city of Gilroy from both the private sector and the community college sector. She most recently worked as an analyst for the Peralta Community College in Oakland. And prior to working for Peralta, she worked for Food Sales West and Waypoint in the areas of human resources, human resources information systems, payroll, accounting, and finance. Angelica has a bachelor's degree in business administration from California State University Fullerton. She is also a veteran, having served four years in the United States Marine Corps at Camp Pendleton. Angelica is a newer resident of Gilroy, having relocated here a few years ago from Southern California. Outside of work, Angelica enjoys the outdoors, running, bike riding, hiking. She also loves a good book. And most importantly, Angelica prioritizes spending time with her family and friends. We are excited to have Angelica on our human resources team. She's already hit the ground running in our office because we don't stop moving. So please join me in welcoming Angelica Harris to the city of Gilroy.
Thank you so much for that warm welcome. You know, as a new resident to Gilroy, we've really come to love this area, and this position really excites me, and it allows me to put a little bit of myself into the community. And so I'm really excited for that. Thank you, LeAnn, for that warm welcome, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Okay, under ceremonial items, we have none. Under presentations to the Council, we begin with the annual presentation by the Arts and Culture Commission, given by Chair Melanie Reynason. Hi.
Hi. Hi, everybody. I'm here to present the Arts and Culture Commission Annual Report. We'll start with our commission members. I'm the Chair, Melanie Reynason. Ruben Dario Villa is our Vice Chair. Alexandra Perdue is a Commissioner. Camille McCormick, who is also here in the back there, is a Commissioner. Adeline Moreno is a Commissioner, and Sandra Ramirez. So we do have a vacant spot open. If anyone out here wants to join, we're looking for one more person. Functions of the Arts and Culture Commission. The Arts and Culture Commission is created by the city charter to perform the following functions. Act in advisory capacity to the Council and the city administrator in all matters pertaining to art, literature, music, and other cultural activities. Formulate and recommend to the Council and the city administrator a program relating to art, literature, music, and other cultural activities for the inhabitants of the city of Gilroy to promote the public appreciation, education, and development of cultural activities in the community. Another thing that we do is fundraising activities to support arts and culture in and for the city of Gilroy, including public art and other events. Noteworthy items, so we helped with the Gilroy Arts Roundtable, which is a really great group of over 60, I think we're actually at 70-plus, local artists and cultural people within our community and neighboring cities. We meet monthly, and we have several of our current ACC commissioners that participate as members, and Ruben, our Vice Chair, leads the group. Silicon Valley Creates Grant Program, the commission received a report on their new grant program, which the city contributed towards, which we're very grateful for, and this is also toward the future of arts and culture in Gilroy. The Santa Clara County Arts Chair Networking, so that's another event with SV Creates, they host every quarter, and it's to bring together all the arts and culture chairs of other cities within Santa Clara County. So we get together for a luncheon to network, to talk about resources, things that work for other cities, any, anything, just to help grow arts and culture and also create a good network for, and resource for us. Current prior year accomplishments, we evaluated applications to use funding and awarded $2,000 to the first annual Chalk Festival that was run by Monos. The Chair and Vice Chair participated in the second annual event, October 7th, just last week, and, or two weeks ago, and it was great, really great outcome. The whole community came out to support, so it was a lot of fun. We recommended the transfer of interest to the Gilroy Museum, represented the commission at local art and community events, including Downtown Live for the Rodeo Series. And we also have participation in the Afrenda Festival at the end of this month, October 28th. So that's also, the Chair and Vice Chair are leading the event, so myself and Ruben. Next year's work plan, we have community outreach to have an ACC booth present and participate in at least two community events, and we're kind of focusing on downtown to keep that revitalization going. We also are looking into an elementary and middle school art program, a pilot program to work with the school district in creating something additional. Explore creating a cultural event for Gilroy, and this one we're looking into possibly in the next 18 months as a multicultural event. And again, we're focusing on downtown, but we'd love to get a lot of community input on that, and I think it'll be really successful. The last thing is fundraising, there's always fundraising. So we're going to develop a strategy, goals, and seek funding. So in closing, we'd like to thank the Council for your support with the grant program, with all of your support with any public art and all of the events. We do feel arts and culture is very valuable for our city, that we've seen just tremendous growth in the last two years, and we're very excited. And the commission, again, will continue to seek opportunity to grow and to find funding. And that's it.
Yay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions?
No, but I have a comment.
Yes, okay.
I want to thank Melanie very much because she's been very instrumental in helping to get funding for the mural program between Lewis and Martin Street. And so without her help, I don't know how much we would have gotten done, but she was able to make, to get a grant for the Koppus Building, which was $20,000. So, thank you, Melanie.
You're welcome. Thank you. Sorry.
Sorry. Councilmember Tovar.
Yeah, I commend you for the work that you and the Commissioner are doing. In my report later on, yeah, I'll be kind of highlighting where we're at with the pop-up part.
Oh, yes.
And one of the things, one of the things that we talked about as a committee was obviously, you know, artwork, displaying public artwork out there, so maybe you and I can connect on that.
It's my ideas.
So I just wanted to do that.
Yes.
Thank you all. All right, thank you for being here, and thanks for that great report. Okay, item 3.2, this is the point on the agenda for a public comment for items that are not on the agenda, and if you are one of those people who has something to say, if you could please make sure that you've handed a card into the City Clerk and that you're seated up near the front. Okay, tie with that, I see, I would like to open public comment, and I see two names. Is that right?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Ron Kirkish and Robert Cepeda. Hopefully you can see a clock somewhere.
I think I'm tall enough to reach this, too.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Administrator, City Attorney, and the community. Last time I spoke, they asked me to speak louder. The last time I spoke, I spoke on the same issue regarding the issue of Zoom meetings. And I listed off a list of cities that have chosen to cut off virtual public comment. Those are Antioch, El Cerrito, Fremont, Modesto, Sacramento, Santa Rosa, and Sonoma County. And now we can add the city of Morgan Hill, our sister city up north. At the last meeting, I spoke with Mayor Turner today, he's in Georgia, enjoying some good peaches there, and I also spoke with Christina Turner, the City Administrator, and Gino, the Councilperson, and they all agreed and told me that at the next meeting, they are going to not allow public speaking on Zoom meetings, whether it's by phone or by computer, any longer. And the reason why is because at the last meeting, there were four individuals that spoke to their meeting. There was, and they, they all included racist comments, anti-Semitic comments, homophobic messages, and basically, it was just terrible. Matter of fact, when asked, when asked, Mark Turner, Mayor Turner, said he could not believe, his gut was wrenched by what he had, what the city had to go through.
I'm sorry, I'm going to stop the clock. Yeah, we can't have conversations right behind the speaker who's speaking. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So anyway, I, I, I wish Tom was here because Tom was one of those who voted for the Zoom meetings, too. I wish he was here. I hope you take this very seriously, too, sir, and I know the rest of you will probably too. So appreciate the time, and thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker is Robert Cepeda. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, and Councilmembers. It's been like a couple weeks since I've been here. Anyway, I took into consideration from last, my last visit here regarding to keep comments at the local level.
Within our jurisdiction.
Within our jurisdiction, of course. And, you know, it's, it's really sad that fortunately, when we turn on the TV, it's all the complete opposite, especially with what's going on in Israel. And the conflict, which I may imply, has been going on for thousands, or at least 1,000 years. And what take, what I find troubling is that it has now come to our streets. Now, I'm grateful that we don't see any protests here, or at least not any violent ones, and that's, that's good to know. But of course, I do believe that people do have their opinions to be open, and I do condemn all the acts that are being done. You know, for me, I myself do want unity and not division. I want prosperity, independence, freedom, and it does start at a grassroots level, you know, so yes, it does start, you know, in a small town. I don't really consider Gilroy a small town anymore as when, was when I was growing up, sadly. I remember when going to Glenview, there was no fences, there no, I don't even know what to call them now, they look like, it looks like a prison now, in my opinion. But I did want to share just this one thing that would, and that is, you know, the media itself is the virus, and, you know, it just automatically changes our perspective and everything that we see. And, I mean, that's all I have to say about that. Now, as to what we can focus on at the local level, there are three initiatives that are being brought to in the state, and it will affect ours as well, and, I'm running out of time. Well, anyway, I did want to just address quickly that there are three initiatives that are going to be, hopefully be on the ballot next year, and you can find more information regarding at protectkidsca.com for protecting children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jeff Ors.
All right, I'm up here today as the Chairman of the Board of the Gilroy Downtown Business Association to express gratitude, just pure gratitude. Our mission is to have a downtown that's clean, safe, that it's inviting, that people feel like they want to bring their families, their kids, their dogs, their grandchildren, and just come down and have a really good time. The reason I'm so very grateful is you've done so much in the way of support recently. We just recently had a, our Beer Crawl, and we had a record crowd, the biggest crowd we've ever had in our Beer Crawls ever. It's audited, but it's nearly 900 ticketed people came to this event, and who knows how many more were there as well. The reason I'm really grateful to the entire city council, you, the Mayor, Jimmy, is that we've got, the trees lit up now, the sound system is almost fixed, we've got some, we've got a few bugs to work out of it, the sidewalks are clean for the first time in years. And so what this is doing, we're bringing people that, from the local community and from out of town, and we're giving, we're putting our best foot forward when it comes to Gilroy. And so, and then the pop-up park as well, and on and on and on. And so I just really appreciate your responsiveness and your support recently, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see no other speakers, is that correct, for this item?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment, and we move on to reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco.
Councilmember Tovar.
Councilmember Armandares.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank the Rabbi for her comments. I appreciate her words and prayers, but I'd also like to remind us not to forget the almost 2,000 lives of Palestinian people who've also been killed and who continue to be bombarded, so that number grows, who continue to be attacked and terrorized by the Israeli Army. So I want to make sure that we recognize them and honor their lives as well. In terms of my report, this, I was alternate for Councilmember Hilton for the Clean Energy, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, where we reviewed the winners, videotapes of the tours of their homes, folks who've renovated and gone all-electric in their homes. So we got to see those, including winners from Gilroy and Morgan Hill. And then we also reviewed a program that is being proposed to help lower-income residents access the clean energy appliances, clean energy reservations, and resources. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Yes. Friday night, I was able to go to Gilroy Gardens. If you haven't been there for their Bus Spectacular Event, please do so. The park is decorated beautifully, great food, it was packed, and it's really a nice event. It's only going to get more crowded as we get closer to Halloween, which will be really good. A week ago, we had the Downtown Committee meeting, and we had an update on the Noise Subcommittee and the Beautification Subcommittee. In November, we're going to be doing the final polishing of two proposed ordinances, which is plywood removal ordinance and the vacancy building ordinance. And once the committee gives those two a thumbs up, we will be coming back to council and the public to let them know what we have come up with. And when it gets to Councilmember Tovar's turn, he'll talk a little bit about his Subcommittee Beautification.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Klein is absent. Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Marks. As the co-chair for the Downtown Committee, we have subcommittees, and my Subcommittee is the Beautification Committee, myself and Fran, one of the owners from O.C.D. Hall, and then Matt, one of the owners of Pormi. And we're going to be coming up with recommendations to the entire council, and I just want to share a few of those that we've kind of researched and worked on. One of the things that we talked about during our meeting was replacing the light bulbs that have been cut from the lights in downtown, and I know the city's working with the GDVA to get those replaced. Some of the other things we talked about was possibly bringing back, hopefully, to build an arch that goes across Monterey that will highlight sort of our historic downtown, and I'm working with other cities to get some sort of estimate, but I know many, many years ago, I believe, that was proposed here at the city, so we're going to look into that, see if that's something that we could possibly do down the road. Other thing we talked about was our sidewalks, maybe replacing some of the bushes with, you know, and weeds, and seeing how we can kind of beautify that a little bit better and allow folks to utilize that space. And as Mr. Ors said, power washing the sidewalks, obviously, and we also talked about the pop-up park. I know it's up and running now, but it, I think it's far from being done, and talked about possibly overhead lighting, you know, maybe a jungle gym, things that will track folks downtown. And then also, as mentioned, we're looking into seeing how we can work to get some public art displays there at the pop-up park. And then one of the things that we talked about as well is looking at permanent funding for outdoor dining. I know that we have a facade improvement grant and permit abatement program, which we were informed has not been utilized or no one's applied for, so we want to look into that more to see how we can better advertise that so we can get businesses to apply for that. And then the last two things, we talked about possibly in a advertisement budget, you know, working with the GDVA, the Chamber, Visit Gilroy, obviously, and seeing how we can begin to promote our downtown. And then finally, exploring partnerships with, say, the Salzley Sharks, and, you know, and obviously, all our other local organizations in town. So those are the recommendations that we'll be bringing back to the entire council once we flesh everything out. In regards to my report, I just want to share that on Friday, October 13th, I, along with our City Administrator, we attended a kickoff for the South County Heels Event at O.C.D. Hall. The event was well-attended, and it was joined by, obviously, Jimmy, myself, several of our police officers, county officials, and many of the Gilroy residents to hear about the inspiring work that has been done to expand access to healthcare and services in our community. It was good to see all the collaborations of the different organizations there, and it was well-attended, and I want to thank everybody that was involved with that, and thank you, Jimmy, for being there, and I look forward to seeing what other services will come to Gilroy for our residents. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. I had every possible meeting, I think, that there could have been since the last council meeting, except for South County Youth Task Force, that will be next week. So I'm going to start with SCRA, which is our sewer treatment plant. We had a, right, we had a board meeting last week with Councilmembers Bracco and Tovar, and also a Joint Water Resources Committee meeting, that's with Valley Water. And the big celebration is, I'm, I hope everybody knows, is the completion of the new recycled water pipeline, because the name of the game is to expand delivery. Production is great at the SCRA plant, but expanding its delivery to get new customers is the challenge, and so this new recycled water pipeline is going to do just that. It is open and functioning, and the mess that they made on Lucesa is all cleaned up and even better than it was before, so we're, we're happy and congratulate ourselves that that, that is done. That was a project with Valley Water. We had a VTA Board meeting as well. A workshop is also scheduled for this Friday because BART Phase 2 is up to $12.2 billion for six miles. It is the last six miles that's needed to circle the bay with rail, but it is at a price tag that has got us all a bit dumbfounded. So it is the source of a lot of discussion, a workshop this Friday dedicated fully and solely to that, and I'll, I'll keep you posted as best I can. Also, at the last board meeting was a decision by the board, and it was unanimous, for the largest interim housing site yet in our vicinity. It's in San Jose, at the Saroni Yard. 200 interim homes will be there, and this is what can come from a city that has a ballot measure, Measure E, that was passed years ago and is in perpetuity to help fund the services that go along with this site. So we're all very happy to see that. And last, actually, that's, I think that's all I need to say. Gone on long enough. Okay, council correspondence, we have none. Future council-initiated items?
Here.
Okay.
Item. So I, I don't believe in stifling free speech or censorship, but I do believe that we need decorum, and in order to handle city business, I believe we'd have to, or we should be discussing an ordinance to establish a code of conduct for our public speakers for our meetings. I think that'll help us here now with our public meetings, which, you know, haven't been bad at all, you know, except for some instances. But also, if we decide to have hybrid meetings, that'll help us stave off any of the attacks or, you know, Zoom bombing that's been going on in other cities and places around the country. So I think it's, be something that we could, that we should talk about, we should agendize.
Okay.
[inaudible]
A code of conduct?
Well, I think it, I think it serves us here, too, with in-person meetings.
I think it's, if the, the OGO Commission is going to be giving their presentation, it would, to me, be something, I mean, they're aware of what's happening today, and it would be nice if they would include, if they would address that in their presentation.
Yeah, I don't know what their presentation includes, but I think, you know, I don't think it's contingent upon it being public or Zoom, like, we need a code of conduct for, for both.
Right.
Or either.
I'm, I'm going to say it's premature, but that's just me, so the rest of you need to weigh in.
Mayor, well, thank you for that. Given that we're having this discussion, I mean, is that something that we could?
We're not having a discussion.
No, 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 no.
We're not asking the merits of it, we're just discussing it.
She's asking if this is something you want to agendaize.
I mean, when, when this comes back, you know, when we talk about the hybrid meetings, is this something that we can talk about then?
You can, of course, talk about anything if it comes back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I just, like I said, I just think it applies to both.
No, I think it's a good idea, but I'd like to hear from OGO first, and then we incorporate it. But definitely, we will talk about it.
Okay, so right now, it's not, it's not something bad to the agenda. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think we just, when's OGO coming?
Whenever they get on our agenda. I'm sure it's going to be November. I just don't know which.
Oh, November. Oh, okay.
Which are the dates. Okay, Deon, sorry, Councilmember Bracco, did I see you have a hand raise?
Yeah, I think it should be part of the conversation when we have the, about the meetings and stuff.
Yeah, because right now, guys, there's, there is nothing that has been, that this council has said to put on our agenda, except for the presentation by OGO. Okay, that's what's coming. Okay? Now, Councilmember Bracco, did you have another future agenda item?
No.
Oh, sorry. No one else? All right. Okay, thank you. All right, the consent calendar. Do, does anyone have something they want to remove from the consent calendar? Okay, then I'd like to go to public comment. Do we have any public comments on any item on the consent calendar?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then looking for?
Who for approval?
A motion to approve. Okay. Made by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Bracco.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. All right, that passes with all five and two absent. All right, item eight, bits of proposals, we have none. Item nine is public hearings. This is a public hearing regarding the proposed water and wastewater rate increases. And our finance director, Harjo, is going to be giving us, giving us the staff report.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, members of the community. Harjo Tsanga, the finance director. The item before you is a public hearing regarding the proposed water and wastewater rate adjustments. A little background on this project, so we, the city owns and operates its own water and wastewater utilities and servicing approximately 15,000 customers and growing. As our operational and capital costs are increasing, for example, inflationary costs increases in our materials and services, our utilities to include electricity, and continued increases in the groundwater extraction charges from our valley water, where we get our groundwater from. More recently, we also updated in 2023, earlier this year, both water and wastewater master plants, which identified infrastructure improvements that are needed to fix the existing infrastructure as well, approximately $22 million. The last rate study was conducted in year 2015, which had a five-year rate increase instituted, last of which was in 2019. So rates have remained unchanged for both utilities since 2019. So we initiated a rate study over the last year with a consultant, and the study has yielded that multi-year rate adjustments are needed to invest in our infrastructure as well as keep up with the rising operational costs. Specific to the rate study, on August 21st, the city council received the presentation on the rate study, as well as adopted a resolution that declared its intent commencing the Proposition 218 noticing process and setting tonight, October 16th, as the date for the public hearing. So since then, we have done the noticing process. We have held also on September 6th, a community meeting regarding the proposed rate adjustments, which was attended by a few of our community members as well. So I'll kind of summarize the findings of the rate study in the next couple slides. So for the water utility, there are two elements. The cost of service and rate design analysis did determine that our current rates are collecting revenues in proportions of 30% fixed and 70% variable. The cost of service analysis did determine that the more, the actual proportionality is 40% fixed and 60% variable. That is what we recommended to the council and are recommending that council adopt. In addition to that, there is a component to the water rates. In addition to the monthly charge, a volumetric charge is currently charged, and it's based on two tiers. So first 30,000 gallons are charged at one rate, and anything above that is charged at a different rate. We are recommending that we transition to a single uniform tier, so the rates that I will present to you will highlight that as well. In summary, the rate adjustments for our water utilities are 8% for the first two years, 6% for the third, and then 4% for the latter two years. I do want to, there is an asterisk on the first year. The first year adjustment does vary by each customer based on their actual classification. So as the cost of service analysis was conducted, it has been updated to reallocate and shift the costs recovered between customer classes. So whatever the 2015 study determined up until now, so whatever shift has occurred between customer classes and proportionalities, that is going to change. Here is a table of the proposed water rates, which consists of, again, two elements. One is the fixed service charge, which varies by meter size from 3/4 inches all the way to 10 inches, which are more larger commercial industrial customers. And then the second element is a variable component, which is more of volumetric rate, so the water that's actually consumed. You'll see in the current rates column, we have the current two tiers, Tier One, Tier Two, for the three zones. And that is going to shift to a uniform rate, which is a single tier, but will vary by the three zones. So for example, if you look at the 3/4 inch, our current rate is $11.53 for monthly fixed services. That will increase to $20.67 in the first year, and then grow, increase up to $25.59 by fiscal year 28. Similarly, sorry?
Are we taking questions now or after?
Usually, it's after. Harjo, would you prefer questions as you go or after?
I can take them now, if we're on this slide, sure.
Is it on this slide?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So what would you guess, your guesstimate be as to the average Gilroy resident? Like, what meter size are they?
They're in the first tier, so 3/4 to 1 inch are probably mostly all of our single-family residents.
What kind of homes or businesses fall into the other?
So those, those can vary. So businesses can be retails that have a varying of 2 to 4-inch meter. It could be larger industrial businesses that require larger meters. Could be multi-families. It could be the hospital. Those require larger.
It's not just residential, it's also commercial?
Yes, these are also commercial. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then, just to kind of highlight, my other element is, on the 3/4 inch, while the current rate, you'll see it's going from $11.53 to $20.67 in the first year. You'll look down to the tier rate, the actual volumetric rate that they're paying is actually decreasing from, for example, Zone One, it's going to be $4.39. It'll decrease to $4. So there is an offset and a shift between fixed and the variable rate as well. For the wastewater utility, which is our sewer utility, we are not recommending any changes to the rate design. We're maintaining the existing design and structure. It does, the rate adjustments on our wastewater utilities are smaller than obviously the water side, so those are 4% for the next five years. This table highlights the proposed wastewater rates. For our residential customers, there is a single monthly fixed charge. For a single-family residents, they're currently paying $46.64. They'll see their bill increase to $51.07, all the way to the fifth year, $59.74. Our non-residential customers have two elements, a base rate, which varies by significance of the strength, as well as the volumetric component that is also based on its strength. So that varies depending on what type of a business it is, you know, low strength versus high strength, depending on if you're retail, hospital, you know, and such. So that, that is the proposed changes there. So, for example, low strength is going to go from $7.41 to $8.36 in the first year, and then by the fifth year, $9.80, 78 cents. Tonight's public hearing really is the final step of the Proposition 218 process, so it is being conducted after the minimum required 45 days from the notification, which is primarily to allow for the, those customers that are impacted to submit a written protest. It's called the written protest period. As far as the protests go, majority, 50% plus one. If majority is received, council cannot institute the rate adjustments. Thus far, as of writing of the report, which was last week, we had received 26 protest letters. And tonight, we will, as we conclude the public hearing, we'll take a final count since then, and then the city clerk will go ahead and enter that into the record as well. And again, if it remains substantially below the required majority, which is, again, you know, we have a total of 15,000 customers, we would need approximately 7,500 plus more, plus one to go ahead and institute those. So again, we are substantially below that required threshold. As far as next steps go, so pending council's approval tonight, January 1st, 2024, is when the new rates will go into effect, and then subsequently on January 1st for each year thereafter for a five-year period. Again, we would start our next communication campaign, which would be to advise all of our customers of the upcoming rates for January so they can plan accordingly. With that, the recommendations before you tonight are adopt the, adopt as final the August 2023 Comprehensive Water and Wastewater Utility Rate Study Report, as well as adopt a resolution approving the water and wastewater rate adjustments. With that, that concludes my presentation. Have to take any other questions.
Thank you, Harjo. Okay, do councilmembers have any questions before I open the public hearing?
I do.
Okay, Councilmember Marks.
Harjo, would you please go back to the slide that had the 3/4 inch? I'm just curious about that. So this meter size, is that residential or business? It is residential. So that $11.53 then is what's on top of Tier One, $4.39? I don't understand. Yes, it is.
Yes, so, so there is the fixed monthly charge. So if you're a 3/4 inch meter, you are currently paying $11.53 as a fixed monthly charge. And then the, the volumetric rate, depending on how much water is consumed, you, based on which zone you're in, one, two, or three, you're either paying $4.39, all the way up to $5.52, up to the first 20,000 gallons. Once you exceed the 20,000 gallons, the next tier of rates is applicable.
So for the residents in Gilroy, do you know what size their pipes are? Are they 3/4 inch or 1 inch?
Yeah, majority of those are 3/4, up to 1 inch for residential, and anything above that is likely multifamily or commercial and industrial.
Yeah, that's what Councilmember Armendaris asked.
Okay. I guess my concern is, from, it's going up 80% between, you know, $11.53 to $20.67, and then it just goes up gradually after that, which is fine. I have been debating this for quite a while, because everything's going up, and our families can only stretch their income so far. And I understand that. Now, is it true that Valley Water increased the cost to Gilroy? But you know, I don't see anywhere where Valley Water's taken a cut. I don't see where they've done anything to help it transfer it onto our citizens. And we're caught between a rock and a hard place, you know, because you have, the city has the bill to pay. This is a real hard dilemma for me tonight.
Okay, do you have a question?
No, I have, that was a statement.
Okay, that's fine. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I think I just want to make a point of clarification. When we take a look at the proposed water rates, we should take a look at both the fixed rate as well as the variable. So as I mentioned earlier, while yes, the fixed rate is going up, you know, significantly, you'll see the volumetric rate is actually decreasing. So not only are we eliminating the Tier Two, we're actually reducing the volumetric rate. For example, Tier One, Zone One, is going from $4.39 to $4. Zone Three is going from $5.52 to $4.73. We're completely eliminating Tier Two. So while in, as a category of fixed charge, yes, it is going up, but volumetric is going down. So the net impact is going to be around that 8% on average.
How does, translate that, please?
If I, let me see if I can pull up. I tried to do this, an example for you. Mayor, while he's doing that, can I, I mean?
Well, Councilmember Bracco has a question, too, and, yeah, sorry. No, he's trying to answer this last one.
So here's, here's an example that, that we could take a look at. So a single-family home with a 1-inch meter with approximately, so average consumption in, in the city for a single family is 8,300 gallons. So under the old rates, they're paying 55, 68. Under the new rates, they're paying 62, 25. So while, yes, the monthly fixed rate you see is going up, you're also seeing a decrease in the variable rate as well.
So then it's just basically going up $6.57 the first year, and then after that, a little bit more, then a little bit more, and a little bit more?
Right. And after that, it's actually going, whatever the percentages are on the presentation. Yes, so 8, 6, 4, 4. I know it's.
Okay.
But when you do the calculation, it works out.
Okay, so that showed a 12% increase, right?
Yes, in the first year, and that's just a difference shifting between, again, different customer classes. So depending on what meter size you are, the first year's going to have that customer classification difference, and then subsequent years are going to be the percentages that, that are indicated here.
Okay. Councilmember Bracco, you had a question?
Yes, on the, the variable charge, that only applies after 20,000 gallons, correct?
No. So the variable charge used to have a different rate after the 20,000. The first 20,000 were Tier One. Anything above the 20,000 was Tier Two. Now, regardless of the consumption, zero to whatever consumption it is, you'll be paying the Tier One rates.
Okay, so you'll pay the $11.53?
Yep.
And then the $4.39 per thousand gallons of water?
So that's the current rate. I would say that if you look at the column fiscal year 24, you'd be paying $20.67 for a 3/4.
But that's how the bill works.
That's how the bill, yeah. So you'll pay that, plus whatever your volumetric is, will be times whatever thousand gallons, times dollar four.
Okay, okay. So there's no more Tier Three then?
Tier Two, yes. So there's no more Tier Two.
There's no Tier Two, but then I thought you said everyone, everyone was in Tier One. How do you get to Tier Three?
There is no Tier Three currently. So there's only two tiers. First 20,000 gallons, which is our current rate.
It's Tier One.
It's Tier One.
Oh, and then, Councilmember Bracco said, then when you're over 20,000, it goes to Tier?
Two.
Two. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I understood that, I understood you saying it was all together as one.
It is going to be under, under the proposed rate.
Can we just talk about the proposed rates? I guess that's what they're trying to get at.
Gotcha. The proposed rate's only one tier.
One tier, no matter how much you use?
No matter how much.
It's one tier, okay. So in essence, you could actually be saving money.
Yes. Depending on your consumption.
Okay.
I mean, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Well, no, I think my.
Okay, answered? Great. Okay. Then I'd like to open the public hearing at, I'm going to call it 6:48, because it's just about 6:48. And I'm going to announce, for everybody who is here, I would ask everyone here to submit, if you, if you wish, to submit a protest letter or to withdraw a protest letter, that you do so with the city clerk at this time. We have two speakers that I can see, correct? And the first one is Eileen Etzinger, and the second one is Andrew DiDomenico. Okay, and you each have three minutes.
Yes, I'm Eileen Etzinger. And we lived here for 23 years. We retired here from Morgan Hill and as an RN. When I was back then, I would now, if I was working, be making about $15 an hour as a nurse. This is ridiculous. We're on pensions, and we're on Social Security. This thing, this 1-inch is $20, and the 2-inch is 61. That's $40 more than a, than a 1-inch. We have a 2-inch. And I think this is outrageous, because I am 87, my husband is 89 years old, we are still independent, and we live here, and I think this is outrageously high. And for the last three, well, actually, since COVID has come along, I don't even know if our water has even been taken care of. Our toilets have been crusty with minerals, and I have worked and worked to try to get all of the stuff out of it. And I don't know what has gone in. I wrote to the water company. I don't know whether it was your water company. No one even responded to me about what was going on in our water and why the toilet bowl should be dirty after you clean it, dirty-looking. So I am saying to myself, this whole thing is a force. And I resent the fact that at this age, I have to pay taxes that are going to increase in the ma- this age, I have to pay taxes that are going to increase in a manner of about $15 over the, or more, I think it's about $19, over the next three or four years of our retirement life, when we're trying very hard to keep independent and live as long as we can. So, I, that's my gripe. It is a gripe. And I would like to know what our water bill goes for exactly. How many pathogens do you study? What do you do with the water to make sure that it's pure? And, and those are the things that I want to know.
Okay, thank you.
I don't trust their water right now.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Andrew DiDomenico, and that will be followed, I see, Matt Newton after this.
Okay, thank you for letting me talk. I have a problem with the monthly charge for the sewer rates. It says a single-family dwelling is 46, a multifamily dwelling is 33. Why is there such a big difference in a multifamily as in a single family? And I believe that the multifamilies are usually more than one income coming in, and like this lady here, we're on fixed incomes, and so, but the rates that you have written down here are, the increases are unbelievable, and I, to me, it seems like, especially on the sewer rates, that multifamilies are going to be using a lot more...
I'm going to ask the speakers, you're addressing the council. You're not addressing our staff. Okay, you're speaking to us, and then we will pick up the question. Okay. I know, but it's us that you're addressing, right?
Yeah, anyway, so, but why is the rate so much different, so much higher? I mean, $13, you know, $16, that's a lot, that's a lot of difference for a single. And, I don't know, I just, I just fail to see why multifamilies are usually people who have renters, and they're making money from their renters, and, but yet, they're getting a break on this, and to me, that's just, this is just unreal, and shouldn't be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Matt Newton?
Hello, sorry, I'm a little unprepared today, but I was, I have an inch-and-a-half service for my water, and it seems like the $12 to go up for the next rate is a little high. After that, it seems like the rates are okay, but that initial seems to be a little high. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to repeat a call for protest letters before I close the public hearing. If there's anyone who hasn't turned one in and would like to, to the city clerk, so that he can give us the final count. Do you want to, I'm in a, there are no other speakers, correct? Is that on this item?
Sir, is this on this item? What's up? Is it on this item?
On water rates?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then can you take?
I don't think it's more words than we said.
Can you take the microphone? Okay, so that we don't hold up the meeting, though, can you?
I'm just going to fill it out, you have your man here.
But you need to speak right now, because I got to close the public hearing.
I'm not going to speak.
Oh, you're not going to speak? Is that what you said?
Right.
Sorry? Okay, you don't need to speak, all right. So, closing the public hearing at 6:50?
Mayor, he said he wanted to speak.
Well, then, he's not on the...
You have to fill out.
No, you got to fill out a card.
Fill out a card.
How, okay. This is the city clerk, this is where you go to say that you're going to speak, and that's how you're then in the system, and we know that you want to speak. We can't mind read.
I have not attended a council meeting in eight years.
It's okay. Okay, why don't you take a card, go ahead and take the microphone, and then hand in your card after you're done speaking? Would that be all right?
Yes.
Okay, so go ahead and take the microphone, and if you don't mind introducing yourself, then.
Hi, I'm John Ballerson. I've lived in Gilroy for about 16 years. One reason why I showed up is I'm like the young lady down here on the corner, I'm on a fixed income, too. I was hoping that the city council would consider people over 65 might get some kind of break on this, all right? The other thing I've noticed is, I've been single for about seven, eight years, my water rate varies from 1,000 to 2,000 gallons from month to month. One month, it's 2,000 gallons, one month, it's only 1,000 gallons. I'm concerned about, I have a leak somewhere, why would it vary? So, I go out to my water meter, they've covered the gauge up with an electrical device, so they can read how many gallons you've used without getting out of the truck. My question is to you, Mayor, if you pull into a gas station, went to fill up your car, and the only thing you saw was a meter ticking, how much is this is going to cost you, but you couldn't see how many gallons you're using or putting in your car, would you be upset? Most of the meters on my street, lawlanderway, have this setup, because I've talked to other neighbors about this, who complained about their, their water usage varies quite a bit, and they don't understand why, and when they look at the water meter, they can't take a reading. As far as water usage, I've converted my front lawn to AstroTurf now. I understand there was some kind of rebate program or something, I'm not interested in that, I'm just interested in reducing my water rate. And while, one more item on the water, the water is crap. I know you're a numbers guy, but it's full of, it's full of, I'm getting off track now. It's full of different items, calcium and lime deposits. It doesn't take very long, I'll put a showerhead in, and three months later, the showerhead is partially clogged. My bathroom sink, you turn on both taps, the water barely comes out, because the amount of calcium in the water or lime, either one, so make, basically, I don't even use it for cooking anymore, I use bottled water for cooking. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
I'll fill up your card.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:57, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to tell us how many protest letters he has, and then we'll come back to council for questions. I see you, Councilmember Tovar.
It's 82, but I don't know, there's a question. 8200 came in.
Okay, maybe, yeah, let's do that while Ty's doing the count. So, Jimmy, I don't know what you have, but the ones I wrote down is, number one, why is there a different charge for single-family versus multifamily for sewer?
Yeah.
And the other is, how does a homeowner know what their water usage is?
Sure. To answer the first question on your water quality, the Environmental Protection Agency requires the city of Gilroy to produce an annual water quality report, and that's on our website, and that shows you every chemical level that is in your water. So, it's, it's on our website, it's transparent, and everything that is required by the EPA falls under that threshold, so you could, you could see that on our website. The other question that I heard was about seniors. The city does offer a senior program for those who qualify for the PG&E Senior Program, so there is, that's on our website as well. And then the last question about why is a multifamily cheaper than a single? Because the multifamily residence gets to divide the price of the one pipe by numerous users. So, say, example, you have a four-apartment complex, all those toilets and sinks go into one pipe, but in a single-family resident, just that residence goes into that pipe.
So, that's what you're paying for?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm going to say, you got to have a water softener in Gilroy. That's just, that's just the way it is. I mean, the hospital, you need to have a water softener. Okay, do you have a count yet, or we're still?
Mm-hmm. Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have the count. It is 31.
31, okay, which is not close to the 7,500 that we would need.
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so then that, I'm sorry, public hearing is closed, I apologize. All right, Councilmember Tovar, you had it followed by Councilmember Bracco, and then Councilmember Armendaras.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the city administrator answered the question regarding the single versus multiple, and then obviously the senior citizen, just town. Just want to thank the residents that came out here and spoke on behalf of this.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bracco?
Jimmy, on the multiple ones, if, if it's a fourplex, and they have four meters, do they pay the regular rate, then?
Okay, you're, might be confusing sewer and water, because the question the gentleman was asking here at the podium had to do with sewer, not water.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Armendaras?
Yeah, these rates do seem really, got the jump, right, the jump, and, and are the, are we setting them at this rate so that we can recover the increased cost for Valley Water? Is this a recovery model, a cost-recovery model as well?
Yes, so, by law, we're not required, we cannot collect more than for providing the services, so the rate study is a mechanism that does a calculation and determines that, so, yes, we're collecting for cost of operating the utility, which includes material supplies and services, as well as for water, the groundwater extraction that we pay to Valley Water. So, they have increased their charges to us over the years, and we're, we're just catching up at this point.
Yeah, I just think they, they are such a concern, I mean, these types of increases, right, like taxes, they're always aggressive, so they hit the lowest-income folks, they hit seniors, people on fixed income, harder than they hit other folks who might be more wealthy, have more disposable income.
So, again, that's to us, to the council, not to, that's not a question for staff?
It's not a question, it's my statement.
Right, to the council, though, right?
No, I mean...
It shouldn't be to staff, okay.
Harjo's our presenter. So, if I get to a question, then, I mean, it's going to be for Harjo, not for you. So, how am I going to get to my question?
No, I think what you, what you're asking was a good one.
But what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that these, these are regressive, and so I'm wondering if there's any cushion there, or any room for us to play with, is there, is there a way that we can lessen, or can we create another tier for people who don't, like the gentleman, who don't hit the $1,000 mark, I mean, $1,000 gallon mark, right? Is there some way that we can help mitigate this jump? Because that, that's a heck of a jump, and if you, your social security doesn't increase that much per year, your SSI doesn't increase that much per year, you know, or your pension check, how are we, how are we going to help folks?
Yeah, so, you know, I'll say a couple words in regards to that again, I mean, this is purely a calculation, you know, mechanism, where we determine what the net revenue requirement is to operate the utility, and that's what the rate study has determined. We, again, we haven't, you know, instituted rates since 2019, and it's catching up, and the other element is the capital infrastructure improvements that we absolutely need to make. You'll recall back in April, you know, council approved the master plans for both water and wastewater. Combined, they have $50 million worth of projects that are baked into our capital improvement program over the next five years, so these are absolutely, I mean, you know, we need to collect rates in order to be able to build the infrastructure, maintain the infrastructure, so it doesn't deteriorate. So, there's also that element as well, and, you know, and I'm thankful that, you know, the city administrator reminded the council as well that we do offer a senior discount, so, you know, that does exempt them from the base, as well as gives them a certain volumetric, up to 5,000 gallons are exempt for fees. So, if anybody in the community currently is not participating and does meet the PG&E Care Program guidelines, please, please, please reach out to us, we're more than happy to provide you additional information and get you enrolled.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, council members. I want to, you have another, okay, hang on then. I want to make, well, no one else is on here, guys, I've already, okay, everybody's spoken, I will go a second round. I would like to confirm what Councilmember Armendaras was asking, because I thought that was a very, very, very good question, and that is that there is, she didn't use these words, but there's no markup from the city of Gilroy on these rates, right? There's no markup at all, this is just cost, cost recovery. Okay, so now, I understand that Councilmember Marks and Councilmember Tovar want to speak again. Councilmember Marks?
I noticed in the staff report, it talked about some of this increased cost was for future development, and that kind of bothered me at, when I read it, because I thought any future developer should be kicking in money towards our water and sewer plants. Is that the case, Harjo?
No, that, that is certainly not the case. I think I may have made a reference in the, in the staff report as to the master plans. They determine the total master plan cost, and how much of that is allocable to future development, which the rate pairs are not going to, and then how much of that $50 million is actually allocated to existing system deficiencies, which the existing rate pairs are, are paying for.
So, developers would pay?
Developers do pay as part of, which is a separate fee, which is the Impact Fee Program, and we collect those revenues separately.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. Harjo, thank you, and sort of just thinking, and I, I understand, I think we might want to reiterate it, but the reasoning behind this, obviously, it's, again, to maintain the infrastructure, right? But I'm just, obviously, I have some concerns, I know we had several folks that reached out to us and protest. I'm looking at it as, what if this does not pass here tonight? What, what happens?
Well, I think we would, we would need some sort of a direction on what the council would want us to explore. Again, we brought back, you know, our recommendations, the rate study is, again, a pure mechanism of calculation, and it's prepared in accordance with the industry standards, so if there's any deviations from that, that you'd like for us to explore, I think we would have to go back to the drawing board and, and, you know, take a look at that, if that's even feasible and defensible.
Yeah, okay, and I ask that because, again, I'm not sure where the rest of my council members are going, I have concerns regarding this, but if, if this does pass, and I know we have a program, obviously, for our senior citizen community, I think if it does pass, I think we need to somehow continue to reach out to them and see how we can supply resources for them, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions from council, then I am looking for a motion to adopt the August 2023 Comprehensive Water and Wastewater Utility Rate Study Report prepared by NBS.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Bracco, and I will second it, for lack of a second, then, so that we can, so that we can vote. It's on the screen.
Which is to adopt the report, right?
This is to adopt a resolution, this is, yeah, to adopt the Comprehensive Water and Wastewater Rate Study Report prepared by NBS.
Councilmember Marks, would you like to voice your motion?
No, I'm saying, I lost my screen.
Oh, I will, I'll fix that after this motion.
Thank you. Oh, oh, I, sir, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that passed four to one, with Councilmember, it's up on the screen for those who want to see, and then the second motion is to adopt a resolution approving water and wastewater rate adjustments, and so we need a motion and a second for that.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second it, so we have a motion made by Councilmember Bracco, and seconded in by myself, if this, if to Councilmember To, well, never mind, I don't need to discuss, it's just time to vote.
Councilmember Armendaras?
No.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein is absent, Councilmember Hilton is absent, Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
No.
And Mayor Blinkley?
Yes, so that passes, right, three to two? That's a pass?
No.
It needs four votes to pass a resolution.
Yeah.
Okay, so then it doesn't?
That failed.
Okay. Do we want to have discussion and keep going, or is this, because for this to fail, it means the money is going to come out of the city's, it means something else that's in our budget is going to have to come off, and for those who know what we're going to be discussing next month, that's kind of a big deal.
Yeah, or, or like Harjo said, right, they can go back to the drawing board, try to come up with something different, or something that can be, rates that can be gradually built in, you know, maybe over a longer period of time, or jumps that are easier for folks. I, I think that we can, we could push a little bit harder, try a little bit harder.
Yeah, I think if I can just make a couple, again, I think this will have a significant impact, because we adopted the budget on the two-year budget, as well as the capital improvement program, so any deviation at this point will delay the institution of those rates to further, you know, collect those revenues that we need to collect in order to be providing the services. And then for wastewater bonds, again, if I may emphasize, we need to make sure we are required that we maintain our debt service ratios there as well, that we're collecting the revenues necessary, because it could also impact that as well.
There is no markup here, that's the thing.
Yeah, so I think, while, and, and we have already, are proposing, again, the rate study is not proposing to institute, you know, we're not backfilling for any services, this is looking forward... This is looking forward, so we deferred it to January as the implementation date, and then moving forward. So while, yes, the first year is eight percent, technically, we're only collecting half a year of it. You know, so we're, I mean, we really, if I may, it's just stress the importance of the significance of the impact it would have on the utilities' budgets and, and such.
I mean, I, I feel like your report was really good tonight, because when I came, I was, oh, no. And then listening to all your rationalization, and, you know, realizing that we're not making any money off this, it's just to make the ends meet, the needs, and this money is gonna come from somewhere else if, if we don't do it. And, you know, we're down to a tier one, the tier one actually was saving us money, even though, you know, the original line goes up, it's, it's really difficult. So, you know, it's, it's a hard choice.
Did I say something?
Harjo, could you show the council? Could you, do you have the slide that shows the bill in relation to other communities in the area? Do you have, yeah, in your pocket? Could, this is a serious issue for us if we don't approve. But I do want to give council a little bit of, of flexibility to recognize what you're saying. This is a five-year rate plan. So if there is a desire from the council to do something different in those first couple of years, I think if we get the rate program as a package, as it is now, and if council wants to move that around a little bit, that still sets us up to be where we need to be. It's not a one-year package, it's a five-year package. So keep, please keep that in mind if that would make you feel a little more comfortable about, you know, considering this proposal, but, go ahead.
Thank you for that.
Or Jimmy, I think, I think like what Councilmember Tovar needs to hear is, what would that five-year package, how would that change? What, what might be, or is that not something you can say tonight?
Oh, I can say tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, we're eight, six, four, 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 which is 30% over five years. So if there is a desire to move that 30% through an average, like instead of 8%, I'm just throwing this out, so instead of 8% the first year, you go six, and then you go six, five, five, something like that. We do know that our increases from Valley Water are about 6%. So, but given that it is a five-year package, if, if that's the direction council would go, we could make that work. It's just not approving, which is, is very scary to us.
Okay, well, then let's, let's, let's do that.
Right, no, and Jimmy, thank you for that, because I think for me, it was that 8% really, you know, and I think if we can kind of extend that out a little bit, obviously gives our residents some time, obviously, I think I would be in favor of that, just that 8% the first years.
So, yeah, make a motion, okay?
I just have to hand up, yeah, just really fast, because I, yeah, I do appreciate that. And I think our residents will too, because it's such a, you know, gut punch to get that 8% now, when we're, you know, all forecasts are pointing towards a recession, right, and we're, we don't know what's to come, but we know people are having some serious hardship right now, so.
Including us, with sales tax.
So I would, yeah, I would.
It's, it's all of us, yeah.
I would, I would appreciate us being able to, to do what you said, maybe six, six, five, five, or.
So Councilmember Bracco, you wanted to propose some?
The motion was going five, six, and then eight.
Ooh. Does that get us there, Jimmy?
Five, six, eight, and then?
And then whatever you need.
Well, we're, we're at eight, six, four, four, four.
And you would need another five and another six.
Yeah.
Are you spreading out evenly over the last three years, instead of another eight jump?
I would, if that's, yeah, I would, I would support that.
Jimmy, what, let's, yeah, what would be your, given that we're, we're here now, what would be your preference for a Plan B?
Plan B would be 6% annually over five years.
Okay, is that okay? Six, okay, so we have a motion for 6% annually over five years, and it is seconded by Councilmember Marks. Okay, so now let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes.
Yay!
Okay, we've got, yes.
Jimmy, thank you for that.
And thank you, everybody, for, for coming and commenting. Harjo, I would ask, since we're about to move on to the next agenda item, if you could please see if there are residents here who would like to have your direct contact, or somebody, so that they know exactly who to call to get their senior discounts, or whatever it is they need to make yourself?
Absolutely, I'll, I'll park myself in the lobby, and if anybody wants to get more information, I'm happy to do that.
So anybody here who wants to talk to Harjo out in the lobby, please. All right, moving on to 10.1, unfinished business. Recommendations for updates to the Gilroy Garlic Festival Memorial at Christmas Hill Park, and Bryce is gonna give us the staff report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council, this is a continuation of the discussion that took place on the September 11th council meeting this year. As a reminder, September 2019, temporary memorial was erected, memorializing the three victims who lost their lives at the shooting incident. Permanent memorial was never developed, but was approved by council of 2020 for the temporary memorial to be designated as the permanent memorial. And so there was a discussion at the September 11th meeting about some updates being needed to the, to the memorial regarding deteriorating elements, specifically the ropes and some of the conditions of the palm tree. So council issued some direction to staff to come back with a concept based on some of the following items: garden only, plan for a raised monument, removing the draped ropes, evaluating options for removing the existing palm tree and installation of three replacement trees, evaluating possible hardscape to help control squirrels, and look at the possibility of a bench being added. In relation to the memorial, a newer vertical memorial is being recommended by staff, this is in addition to the existing plaque. So it says, in addition to the existing plaque that's at ground level, by being vertical, it increases its visibility to those that are walking by the memorial. It's proposed to be made of concrete and stand about three inches high, three inches wide, with a depth of 68 inches. It'd be on a raised platform, as indicated on the graphic proposed design on the screen. The city would install the foundation work underneath it, and it would be southeast facing for those that are entering into the memorial area. The estimated cost is $2,000, and as a proposal that staff was bringing, that is the only cost element that we have in this. All other work would be done by city staff with existing resources. Looking at the trees, in, in researching the tree, the removal of the palm tree may actually damage the garden due to the size of the root structures grown underneath it. So staff is recommending the tree to remain. However, the tree maintenance contractor will maintain the palm tree to clear dead fronds and maintain the tree in a clear, multi-ordered manner, so increase the, the work in that, on that tree itself. There is four oak trees that are proposed to be part of general park improvements, donated trees, that will be going towards intersections surrounding the memorial, because the memorial is at an intersection of three walkways through the park. And then for the ropes and posts, staff is recommending, again, as mentioned at the previous item, previous meeting, removal of deteriorated ropes, but also the posts as well. We are not recommending them to be replaced, as any replacement would likely deteriorate as well. If plants are currently growing against the posts, cannot survive without that structure, then they will be removed. As far as the benches and hardscapes for squirrels, staff is not recommending to pursue these items. We evaluate benches, even possibly picnic tables, but we fear they will create a nuisance with refuse accumulation, and unfortunately, the use as sleeping areas. And the hardscape is not recommended, mainly because in order to overcome the ability of squirrels to bypass certain hardscape, you're looking at erecting, you know, chicken wire, or fencing, or doing rocks in the area, which would change the appearance and the nature of the garden, so it's increased cost and potentially lessening accessibility there. So staff will continue researching other non-hardscape options to try to address the squirrel issue there. On the screen is a rough conceptual drawing, so at the, the lower portion here, you can see that this is the memorial location, it'd be southeast facing, and standing looking out towards the, this, this portion of the sidewalk here. And then we've placed in there the four oak trees on the sides along the pathways here for shade for the, for the, any pedestrians walking through those paths. So that is the proposal from staff. Happy to receive any comments and directions from council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bryce. I don't see anyone from the council on the board yet, so I'm gonna go.
Go ahead.
Okay, can you, yeah, leave this, this picture here. So to confirm, for anybody who's been out there and has, is already familiar with the site, the boulders that are there will all stay, right? There's no plan to remove boulders. It's just removing the, that are already actually down right now, and the, the, the flags, the, the flags and the ropes. Right, and the little posts that they were attached to. But everything else at the ground level, including the, the stone that has engraved the names of the three decedents, and the three large boulders that exist right around it for the three who, who passed away, and then the other decorative boulders that are at each entrance, those all stay. The palm tree stays, and then these large trees are donated oaks?
Correct.
That are going to be planted as shown on, on this. And then the monument, the upright monument gets added, as you showed on an earlier slide.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember To?
Okay, look back.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, okay, Councilmember Armendaris?
Yeah. I, I like the tree, the oak, I think they're, they'll have shade and more of an intimate, right, like, different vibe to the area, because it seems so open air and dry now. And the monument, I appreciate that too, it looks nice. But could we not put the garlic bulbs at the bottom base of the potted bit, like just in terms of my personal taste, that I like the one on the monument, but having them all on the base, would that be, enough you guys agree with that? It seems a little bit, it's too, I think it's too logical for a monument of that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's totally something for council to discuss. Just so you know, this whole kind of design came from the monument that's at the memorial cemetery, the Gavlin Hills Memorial Cemetery, and they, on the, it is a monument just like this, only larger, and across the bottom are the symbols for, yeah, so, okay.
Definitely.
Okay.
The rest, I really like it.
All right, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Bryce, so remind the public, where are the names of the deceased located there?
So, just so that, if you notice here where the memorial is, the, the, the boulder that's placed, it was right, essentially right up here. It's just kind of covering this, in this relation, just to give a graphic of where the memorial would be located. Obviously, it'd be upright, so it wouldn't be covering the ground there, but.
It's flush with the ground?
Yeah, no, no, I, I've been there, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because it's sort of, I'm thinking about this, obviously, and again, I, I'm glad we're doing this, and I, I would agree with Councilmember Armendaris, we might want to, you know, take the garlic bulbs off, but I'm also looking at, you know, sort of, you mentioned no hardscape improvements, right? I mean, because I was looking at, kind of making that place a little bit more distinguished, where maybe we do pavers, or we do some three lights, something to, to sort of honor the three individuals. I, I personally feel, I think we could do a little bit more than what we're doing, but obviously, you know, whatever the council decides. But for me, I think, you know, if we're installing some pavers, some decorative lighting there, that just really kind of brings people's attention to, you know, to that area, because right now, even with this here, I think this can be great, and even with the trees, but I just don't see it as somewhere where, you know, so I guess for me, if, you know, again, whatever the council decides, but I'm thinking that, you know, if we're not gonna add pavers, bricks, whatever it may be, that we add some sort of lighting to help distinguish that space, so, that's my.
Okay.
I don't know, I mean.
Brilliant. I, I, I think the goal here was something that we didn't have to maintain, is trying to reduce maintenance. Lighting is another thing that, yeah, it's, it's okay. It's, if the council, we have staff's recommendation, I like it, I, that's up to the council whether or not to remove the garlic bulbs. It was, Jim Habin is offering to, to get this monument built at his cost, which is why it is so little for us, and he thought it should not be so plain. And those are just, those garlicks that you see are the ones at the bottom of the G in the Gilroy logo, that's what they are. So it's whatever the council wants, and the size is commensurate to the space, 30 inches by 30 inches. The city will be paying to put the foundation in that this then mounts on. So it's the $2,000 cost is what he's producing and delivering. So that's really all there is to it, it's a matter of what the council wants to do.
I appreciate, Councilmember Tovar's, you know, you know, it's, I think it merits distinction, right, something to be a little bit more, but I also think that, I mean, given the cost of so many things right now, I would like to see us do some, you know, some fundraising on our own. You know, I think we can, it's a, it's an endeavor some of us can undertake to, to help offset the cost of this, because if we do install lights, you know, the tree's already, everything else is gonna incur maintenance costs, but if we did some private fundraising, I think that would help, and, you know, it deserves it.
And Jimmy, thank you for that, Councilmember Armendaris. If that was the case, Jimmy, and we decide to move forward on this, and we decide to raise money for whatever it may be, is it something that we can add on to this, or do we have to bring that back to council?
You really have an, an open palate here.
Yeah, okay.
You could change it all tonight, you could say, go for X amount, and then come back later to see what the cost is, but you, you have an open palate.
What about installing, because like I have these at my house, they're, they're little solar lights, I mean, I got them at Costco, and the city, you could install them, and if they get trashed, or hit, or, you know, because I know that Karen Aiken, who designed this before, said that, you know, people are, she doesn't know how, but they're crashing into these posts and things there for whatever reason. So if something does get broken or ruined, then you just remove them.
Yeah.
But at least you can start out with an effort that's just a solar light.
Right.
That would beautify, they, like I said, I have them down my driveway, and they're, they're very pretty, but, yeah.
Because one of the things that, Bryce, that you mentioned regarding?
And they're inexpensive, yeah.
The benches, you mentioned that we're not gonna include benches because of sleeping area, right? But I mean, there are benches where, I mean, obviously, they're sectioned off, you know, where, I mean, if you're gonna sleep on it, you're gonna sleep on top of a bar or something like that, so maybe that's something we do as a fundraiser, so.
Yeah, thanks for volunteering for that, friend. Okay, so, this is not a motion item, but do we have direction to pretty much go with what, what staff, I feel like we have direction to go with what staff is saying, except I'm not clear on the garlic bulbs.
Yeah.
Who likes?
I like it.
Just as they are?
At the bottom?
I like them as they are, too, and I don't think you could put few, I think it would look worse with just three.
No, I'm just saying, just the one in the middle.
I know, I'm saying, I'm saying to, to reduce the bottom from five to three wouldn't look good. So it's either take them off altogether, and just leave the one in the, in the center.
It's just my taste.
Yeah. Okay, so is there support to leave it as it is?
That's fine.
Yes, 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 and yes. Okay, so is that, Jimmy, that's all you need, right?
Just confirmation on the solar lights?
On the, oh, on the solar lights? Yeah, did everybody like the idea of trying solar lights? So just the, the kind that you, you buy at, like a 10-pack at Costco for like $50? I mean, this is not a big expense.
And you don't think somebody's gonna steal?
They probably will, and, they, they probably, they probably will. I, that's why I said, if they're gone, they're gone, or, or we don't?
Well, the reason I put it on there?
Or you don't do it at all?
No, I, I wouldn't like to have it on there.
Don't do it at all? Okay, never mind, so never mind. Yeah, please don't speak from the audience, that's not how, I'm sorry, it's, it's called disruptive of a meeting, so, okay. All right, so no solar lights, okay?
Again, it was to honor the victims, that's why.
I know, I know, but no, no solar lights.
People have their own.
We also need to take public comment on this.
Oh, we need to take public comment on this. Do we have any, I don't see any on my screen, but do you have any?
No public comment, but we just need to make them.[1658.04]
Yes, thank you. Okay, closing public comment, and we are moving on, right? Okay, thanks, everybody. This brings us to 11.1, which is to authorize the city administrator to enter into a three-year service agreement with the County of Santa Clara for animal sheltering services for the period of July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2026. And this staff report is going to come from Officer Juan Rocha. Not officer, captain, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, and council and city administrator, members of the public. Juan Rocha, again, with the police department, police captain. And joining me tonight is David Carter, he's a community service officer, and he is our animal control officer for the department. And again, the presentation is for a proposal for a contract agreement with Santa Clara County for animal sheltering services. Little bit of background, the county has provided animal shelter, sheltering services for at least the last 10 years and probably many years before that. Our current agreement with the county expired June 30 of this year, 2023. But the county does provide services to the public during business hours, Monday through Sunday. Obviously, holidays is an exception. Services they provide through our contract, our agreement with them, is they offer sheltering of domestic animals found within the city of Gilroy. They quarantine and monitor animals that are involved in biting incidents. They process, they have a process in place that allow owners to reclaim their abandoned, lost, or impounded pets. Also euthanasia and disposal of unclaimed animals that are deemed, or deemed unfit for adoption or to be returned to the field. They also offer services for sterilization and vaccination of feral and community cats, so they can be returned to the field. Depending on their shelter population and space availability, they do offer the option for owners to relinquish their pets. They offer veterinarian services during regular business hours, low-cost spay-neuter services, and then the police department has access to their kennels on a 24/7 basis for animals that we have to impound during calls for service. Our, we do offer animal control services through our department. Again, it's, David Carter is our primary animal control officer. However, our other staffs, such as police officers, detention service officers, the other community service officers, are cross-trained in animal control duties. These responsibilities include investigating dog bites, fights, reports of cruelty or neglect to animals, barking dog complaints, dogs that are loose or off-leash, issuance of citations for Gilroy municipal code violations, and obviously, public education. This model allows for immediate service to the community and an increase in customer satisfaction. So in late May of 2023, the county contacted the department and notified, notified us that there will be a increase in cost for their services. We received the first three-year proposal from the county on June 15. And as you know, by then, our biannual budget for fiscal year '24 and '25 had already been approved. However, the services have remained the same, and they will remain the same under the new proposed agreement. The costs for services for fiscal year '23 were $70,915. But also in 20, fiscal year '23, the county processed about 4,300 animals. Of those, 919 came from within the city of Gilroy, roughly 21%. So as a result, the county has screwed up their, their costs to reflect the services that are being provided to the city of Gilroy. And then the following numbers or amounts reflect the proposed increase. For fiscal year '24, it is $150,000. Fiscal year '25, it would go up to $157,500. And then fiscal year '26, it would go up to $165,375. So obviously, it'll impact our current budget. However, under the current budget for fiscal year '24, we were approved for $70,000, $70,015 for animal sheltering services. And then fiscal year '25, we were approved for $73,043. You know, we do anticipate salary savings for the next two years that could help cover the differences in cost. The difference for fiscal year '24 would be about $79,985. And then fiscal year '25, the difference would be $84,457. And then the cost for fiscal year '26 would be $165,375. Obviously, we would make a recommendation to include that in our budget for fiscal year '26 and '27. So with that, we, our recommendation is to authorize the city administrator to enter into a three-year service agreement with the County of Santa Clara for animal sheltering services for the period of July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2026. With that, I'll take any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Before I go to council questions, I want to say, you're police officers, I didn't mean to demote you as officer, I just was thinking police officer.
No worries.
Captain. Okay.
Chief.
So we have two council members on the board to speak. If any others, please put yourself on the board, because then I would like to go to the public before really getting into more discussion with council. Okay, Councilmember Armendaras, followed by Councilmember Marks.
Oh, I thought you were going to take public comment first.
Oh, I can. I was going to.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Is that amount, that's just one-time fee, it doesn't matter how many animals we take?
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Right, and the service, the services are not changing, it's just the cost.
Just the cost.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well then, we'll go to public, go to public comment, and I see four. So in this order, if you wouldn't mind coming to this podium one at a time, Karen Fortino, followed by Kathy Hotchden, followed by Paula Myers, followed by Sharon Gerard.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Karen Fortino, and I would like to speak to you tonight about the proposal that's in front of you for animal services for the city of Gilroy. I currently volunteer with All Animal Rescue Friends and also some other rescues here in Gilroy. And I can tell you that on a daily basis, if you happen to visit All Animal Rescue Friends site, Gilroy Neighborhood Watch, uncensored and censored, that there is a huge need for volunteers to come out and help the animal control officer for loose dogs. There's also help for injured animals, to help track cats, and unfortunately, in some cases, to pick up deceased animals and scan to help find the owners for these animals that get hit or whatever happens. We do respond to many loose animal calls, and when we go out, our goal is to scan the animal, and if the animal is microchipped, then return to the owner. That's a great ending for a day of work for volunteer to give it back to the owner that this animal dug out of the yard or whatever happens. In the case where the shelter is so important to us, is many of these animals are not microchipped. So what happens then is we either get a hold of the animal control officer, and we need to bring these animals to the shelter. Leaving these animals running around in the city of Gilroy is really, can be unsafe for our citizens of Gilroy. You could be walking your dog, and a stray dog gets out. The dog has been out for two, three, four days, they are scared, they may become aggressive, and they may bite someone else's dog that's on a leash, they may bite you, they may bite children, they all might, also might become involved in a car accident, which is the worst-case scenario, because they do dart out into traffic. So I'm coming to you tonight just to tell you how important the shelter services are to the city of Gilroy and the volunteers out here. The other thing that the shelter does is after the five-day stray hold, they work very hard to try to get these animals that are brought into the shelter new homes, where they can live a great life. In closing, I would like to encourage all of you to vote in favor of renewing this animal services contract, so that we can continue to care for animals that do get out here in the city of Gilroy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Kathy Hotchden?
Good evening. We need all of you to approve this agreement. We cannot go back to where we were five years ago before we had any agreement at all and have virtually nothing down here in Gilroy for our animals. We had nowhere to take lost, sick, injured, found animals, other than a drive to San Jose, or temporary impound at the police department for a little while. Up until COVID, the shelter was performing free spay-neuter on cats four months and older and selected breeds of dogs. There was a priority list, chihuahuas, huskies, shepherds. There was definitely a waiting list. But it was a valuable service, because so, excuse me, so many of our residents can't afford to do that on their own. And the cats, the cats in Gilroy. If you saw my email today, you saw my chart, that one male cat, one female cat, over six years, will have 9,200 kittens. And of those, at the end of six years, given the mortality rate, there'll be about 6,200 cats still producing. We need this agreement in Gilroy. Please say yes to it.
Thank you. Paula Myers?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Paula Myers, I'm the president of Friends of San Martin Animal Society, or Fosmo says we're known. I'm also a rescue that's out there on the ground with cats. We need this service. Kitties procreate, they are just everywhere, and the community and rescues can't hold it. We really need your help. So please approve this, I realize it's costly, but please. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Gerard? And then after that will be Michelle Rodriguez, if you want to be ready.
Thank you. I just want to put, in a one-block radius between Sixth and Chesna, January to the end of March, in my neighborhood, we trapped 17 cats, bathed and neutered, post-COVID. Because when COVID happened, nothing happened, and cats just reproduce like fire. Come to September, I've had to trap six cats, two were spayed, more neutered and returned. Four kittens are now at the shelter, trying to find homes. But that's just a one-block, three-month window. And with COVID, those 6,200 cats have already reproduced probably four times. We need this so that we don't become San Jose Animal Center, for two reasons. One, we need to get the feral cats calmed back down, which probably will never happen, but we're working on it. And to give those people a place where they can go if they find the neighborhood-friendly cat that really isn't owned but has an abscess. They need medical treatment, just like everybody else. So please, even though it seems like it's a lot of money, it's not, compared to how many cats are on the street, just in my one-block radius, and then even on 10th Street, I've heard of overrun of cats. And that's just cats, that's not the dog that gets hit by the car, bites the kid walking down the street. So please, spend the money on this effort, and it will help everyone and our future, and our animals' future. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Rodriguez?
Hello, I'm here to speak on behalf of the animal shelter. The animal shelter is greatly needed in our community to help our homeless pets and abandoned pets for medical needs that they deserve. And also, the animal shelter provides a really good TNR program, which stands for Trap, Neuter, and Return. That's the least we can do for our feral cats in our community. Again, that is the least thing we can do. If I get lucky, sometimes I can get the kittens from the feral mamas and get them adopted out through the animal shelter. They do take the kittens, and they do try to help our community cats. I work very closely with them, and they are wonderful. I wouldn't be able to do the work I do. I do a lot of volunteer work for many years, and I will continue to help those that are needed, needed. Thank you, and hope we continue to get the service out. These poor animals deserve.
Thank you. Okay, I see no other comments, is that correct?
Correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. I mean, I'd be ready to make a motion, but I know we have two council members who want to speak, so. So Councilmember Marks, go ahead.
I just have a real quick question, Captain Rocha. 21% of the number you gave is just Gilroy, correct?
The city of Gilroy.
So who's the 79%? Is that Morgan Hill, San Martin?
Different cities, the county.
The unincorporated areas.
Unincorporated areas. That was all, I was just curious.
Okay, Councilmember Armendaras?
Thank you. I do plan on supporting the motion, ma'am, but I also wanted to ask the captain, the, we have a separate contract for those who collect the tallow or the dead animals, is that true?
Correct.
Yeah. Would we be able to, like, I don't want to hold this up, because I know the contract's been expired for a minute, but would we be able to ask them to also take this on as maybe part of, could we negotiate, or is there any room for that? What do you think?
I don't know if they offer these services. They weren't part of the proposal, and they weren't part of the last couple of proposals. So I'm not sure if they offer the tallow services.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they do, because they do it for other cities, but I'm just wondering if we could do that. If not, I'm okay with, you know, us negotiating it at a, you know, in a different time. And then, yeah, I've seen these, I've seen these ladies' work, I've seen the work that they do, and then, and how they partner with the, the animal shelter, that's why I'll be supporting this. My neighbor left her property with over 50 cats there, and, and the work that the TNR group does to, or did, right, to trap them, help save the lives of the cats that they could, get them adopted out, traveling all over the state, or further, you know, beyond our state lines to get those kittens adopted out, it was amazing. And the way that the animal shelter partners with them to help them provide, you know, the food and the adoption services and the healthcare, it's amazing and much needed, so. So I thank them, and I, I support this for our county contract.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion?
No, Mayor, I'm going to allow you, I'll second it, so.
Oh, sure. I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to sign the three-year service agreement with the county for animal sheltering services from July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2026. Is that okay? Seconded by Councilmember Tovar. On our screen. All right, passes unanimously with the five of us. All right, thanks, everybody, for coming. All right, 11.2, annual review and adoption of the city's investment policy. Harjo comes back.
Busy man. I know. Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the community, Harjo Tsanga again. I will be presenting the annual review and adoption of the city's investment policy item before you. So some background on this item, it's California code, and current policy required that we bring back a statement of the investment policy to the city council on an annual basis. We typically do this in the fall. The city's idle and surplus funds are invested with three primary objectives as outlined in the policy, which is safety, liquidity, and yield, in that order. Majority of the city's, as recent as the last quarterly, about $190 million of idle or surplus funds are invested with the local agency investment fund, which is great, one of the benefits that it offers is it offers great daily liquidity while earning interest on those dollars. So we're able to draw on those, those funds as, as our need arises. On the contrary to that, there is a limitation as well. The LEAF accounts are subject to $75 million deposit limit. City has two accounts, and on both of those accounts, we have hit that limit in the past two years. With this year's annual policy change, we are recommending to add California Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System, also known as CLASS, to the eligible securities list in the investment policy. It is essentially a pooled investment option created last year via a joint exercise of powers agreement by and among California public agencies, and acts, and acts very similar to LEAF. It currently has about 116 agencies that are participating in it. It offers, again, similar to LEAF, the daily liquidity that we would be looking for, as well as from a performance perspective, it is performing better. So for example, fiscal year '23, LEAF earnings were, on annual average, 2.17 versus what the CLASS prime fund earned, which is 3.96. So with that, that is the only change we're recommending at this point to the policy. The recommendation before is, you is to adopt a resolution establishing the updated investment policy. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Harjo, Councilmember Bracco, you have a question? Oh, you're on the screen. Sorry. Yeah, okay. Does anybody have a question, before I go to public comment? Okay, then I will open public comment.
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
No speaker cards, okay. Closing public comment. Coming back to council then, for a motion to adopt a resolution establishing the city's updated investment policy.
I'll move.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Marks, seconded by Councilmember Tovar.
Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that's unanimous with five. Okay, that brings us to city administrative reports. Jimmy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just two quick reports. Did want to report out on a really great weekend for downtown Gilroy. Had a lot of fun attending the brew crawl, and I want to give a lot of credit, too, to our community development department that has spent the last two weekends working through the sidewalk vending ordinance, and also on Friday, making sure that Overflow Tap House was able to open the doors on Saturday. There's nothing better for a brewery to open their doors on the day of a brew crawl, and it's a really cool place. I encourage everybody to go down there and check out all the places, they're all a little different, all have a different vibe, but I'm really proud of our community development department, Sharon Goey and Hippolyta Olmos and Cindy McCormick. Lastly, it's time of the month again to fight dirty. This Saturday, we will have the next rendition of our garbage pickup out at Gilroy Sports Park at 9:00 AM for about two hours. So if you've got a little bit of time, we've got gloves and some picker-uppers, and there's plenty of trash to go around, so that concludes my report.
This Saturday?
This Saturday, yes.
21st, right.